News instead of the email, so he went to C-Poms by mistake, so he'll be here.
Yeah.
We waited on you.
Oh, thank you very much.
It's all right.
He's the one who told me we were at C-Poms today. Messed me up.
Good evening. Come call the Special Call Work Session of the Glen County Islands Planning Commission to order and give a little housekeeping. This is a work session that's for the benefit of the planning commissioners. Those folks who will be represented applicant will be making a presentation and that, but we're here to learn more about this particular application. We had planned to do some training for the two new commissioners, but also dust up on the old commissioners of certain items that are required as a commissioner, but understand that Mr. Worley decided they'd rather have a joint work session with mainland planning commission and we'll do that soon, I think, right? Sooner rather than later. But, but Ms. Leaf, first of all, I want to welcome Mr. Bryce Brock, newly elected or appointed commissioner, and Robert Usry, and welcome to the planning commission, I think, I guess, and also welcome back Odessa Brooks and Patrick Duncan, reappointed. Ms. Leaf, if you want to do whatever you need to say to us.
Good evening, commissioners. Stephanie Leaf, planning manager, and welcome to our newly appointed commissioners as well. As the chairman said, we are planning to do a more thorough, in-depth planning commissioner training in the near future, so we'll be in touch with some possible dates for that, but we were looking to do a joint work session with the MPC and the IPC. And at that point, our county attorney would go through Open Meetings Act, Open Records Act, ethics, meeting procedures, conflict of interest, a lot of the, a lot of that legal information that's important for us to keep in mind, important for commissioners to keep in mind as they serve on this board. So because we, and the applicant team, they're still waiting for Harris Teeter Fuel Station, they're still waiting on a couple of members. They had a conflict with some other meetings, and so they weren't able to get here till 5:30. So I'm kind of filling the time for about 20 minutes, just to kind of go through a few things, some refresher for our current commissioners who've served before, and then some possibly new information to our new commissioners. So I just wanted to kind of go through the development review process and how we operate with the development projects here at the county, really kind of how they come into the county and get started, and now how they really end up in front of you at our meetings. So kind of the key, the key aspect of our development review process is what we call our development review team. And this is a body of a variety of different departments and divisions and agencies. And up on the screen is who is part of the development review team. It's definitely our planning staff, and then county engineering, county public works, the Joint Water and Sewer Commission, the Coastal Health District, Environmental Health Division, the fire department, building inspection, geographic information services, and mapping, and then our airport commission are all members of our development review team. And so when applications come into our office, they go through this process. We do everything really electronically now. There's very little paper that we're really handling in our office these days. So this goes through a program that we call NFOR. It's an electronic permitting program. And then we actually recently, just some months ago, kind of rolled out a new community development portal where applicants can upload all their plans and documents into this portal, and then that kind of automatically enters into our development review team process, once fees are paid and once everyone has submitted all their documents. So this is a little bit hard to read. There's a lot on this screen, but, and I can, I'll email this to you after the meeting, so y'all have this. But we've done just some flow charts of these applications that you would see in front of the planning commission. So site plan application is one of them, and this just kind of goes through the process that we go through. So once it goes through development review team, then once we have determined that it meets all of the elements of our review, then that is when we will officially schedule it for a planning commission. So a couple of things there, as you see in your applications, we include a copy of what we call the review history, which is a list of all the comments from our development review team. And typically, you only see applications that all of us have said are okay or okay with comments, meaning that they have met all of our, you know, we feel are all regulations and have met what we require. There may be applications that may come to you that we still might say is noncompliant, because it's not something that we as staff have authority over. So like one example would be, you know, you may see an application come to you that our county arbiterist has said it is noncompliant with the tree plan, because that applicant intends to ask the planning commission for a variance from the tree ordinance. So in that case, you know, our county arbiterist didn't have the authority to say you meet the regulations. Only the planning commission has that authority to grant a variance. So that's what might happen in that case. And then this is same, same kind of flow chart, but for rezoning applications. And so rezoning is when you would have the public hearing in front of you. And conditional use permit, which is the permit that Harris Teeter is in for, they'll have that conditional use permit hearing at the next meeting on January 19th. And then I just wanted to go through a couple of things that apply specifically to, to the planning commissions and particularly the island planning commission. So the IPC for, I'm not sure really when you all instituted it, but it's been a number of years, but you all instituted a separate public comment policy. So in our zoning ordinance, we do require public hearings for certain types of applications, and those are state regulated, as well as in our ordinance it regulates what, what legal requirements are for a public hearing. And the islands planning commission some years ago wanted to go kind of above and beyond. So in addition to applications that took public comment, that we were legally required to take comment on, the IPC really wanted to expand it to allow public comment on site plans and village preservation. This policy still includes comments on preliminary plats, but a couple years ago, the Board of Commissioners decided to change the ordinance where preliminary plats are administrative review, they no longer go to the planning commissions. So on site plans and village preservation, you will all have, you would take 30 minutes total of public comment, and each speaker has a maximum of five minutes that they could comment. This public comment policy, though, does not apply to joint meetings. So if you have a joint meeting with the mainland planning commission, you, that this comment policy does not apply. So the joint, particularly joint work sessions during planning commission, you would not have public comment on those items unless you were having a joint public hearing on an item. And just of note, I think it was sometime last year, the mainland planning commission actually adopted a similar policy. So their, their timeframe's a little bit shorter. They only take 15 minutes total for comments, and then allow each speaker to have three minutes to speak. And then I just wanted to go over a few things in your planning commission bylaws. This is a separate document that was recently revised about a year and a half ago. It was revised. There were a number of work sessions and subcommittees that met from the planning commission, and then the Board of Commissioners approved the revisions. And this is really just, you know, what, what governs what you all do as a commission. And so I just wanted to go through a couple of things on this. Just particularly timely is the election of officers. Because this was a work session, we decided not to have the election of officers on this meeting. Your election of officers is scheduled for your January 19th Islands Planning Commission meeting. And so that's when that, those will be held. You do elect officers for chair, or you, you elect positions of chair, vice chair, and secretary. And Ms. Janet Loving, who is not here this evening, has been the recording secretary for many, many years, and she does an excellent job. So in the past, the planning commissions have often created a nominating committee where you would kind of just decide separately, you know, who might be nominated for these positions. The bylaws were changed that really these are nominations from the floor now, so there wouldn't be a nominating committee that would need to be created outside of your process here. So next, so next Tuesday, when you all meet, you can take nominations from the floor for chair and vice chair. And you do need four affirmative votes to elect the chair and vice chair and recording secretary. And then all officers will hold office until the election of successors. So in this case, Mr. Willis's, Chair Willis is here as serving in the chair role, because there has not been new elections yet. And then for each of the planning commission meetings, our planners will create staff reports and include all the accompanying documents and the plans and any studies that may apply to that particular application. And so we do work with the chair closely to create those agendas and the chair in preparation of those agendas. And then just a note, for Islands Planning Commission, we've brought this up a couple of different times, and it's remained the same. Currently, staff, when we create our staff reports, you know, we, we address the different, the different standards of evaluation, and we make comments. However, for the IPC, the staff does not make recommendations. So for the Board of Commissioners and for the mainland planning commission, staff will at the end say, staff recommends, you know, this particular action, and then may also suggest maybe some conditions. So what we do with the IPC is we have not made recommendations. That's been the, the selection of the IPC over the years, is to not have the recommendations from staff. But what you may see is we might suggest some conditions, or we might suggest some thoughts, just for you all to consider as you're reviewing the applications. And then just on meetings, we do have a meeting schedule that we have put out. I know I did send that to, to Ms. Brock, and I'm not, I'm not, I think we did send out to everybody. We may send that out again, just to make sure you all have those dates on your calendar. Typically, the IPC meets the second, I'm sorry, the third Tuesday of each month, but we did change a couple of dates in 2021, just to work around some holidays and some other events. We do have all the meetings, though, on our website calendar now. If you go to the website homepage, all those meetings are on there. So if you ever want to double check when a meeting is, you can definitely go on there if you're trying to plan ahead. And then we will sometimes have special meetings or a special called work session, like we're having tonight. That is up to the chair, so the chair can call those. And then we will, we try to, you know, work as far in advance as we can to, to schedule those. Sometimes matters come up where we might not, we might have a quicker turnaround, but we do have legal requirements on when we have to post those special called meeting notices and let people know when that is going on. But we may have those from time to time. This, this next year, you know, we anticipate doing a lot of work on the zoning code update, and so we anticipate there probably will be a number of work sessions, special called meetings, that we will have this year. We don't have dates on those yet, just as we're working through adopting and revising that zoning code. So quorum and voting and rules of order. So four members of the seven member planning commission are considered a quorum. So what we will sometimes do is if we are scheduling site visits for any upcoming applications, if we, if we have applications where maybe it's hard to see the property from the public right of way, or the property's on the island, it may be a little more difficult to get over there, staff will work on scheduling some site visits for you all. And because it's very difficult to, to record at a site visit due to the winds and due to a variety of noises that might hinder that recording, and then it's also very difficult to make sure that we have ADA accessibility, and so we do not have site visits typically as public meetings. So we will limit those to up to three members, so that there is not a quorum, just so we can ensure that we are meeting the Open Meetings Act. And so that's what's important for us to always keep in mind is meeting that. And then for votes of the commission, you do need at least four members for the transaction of any business. And let's see, and then rules of order, the commission does follow Robert's rules of order. And I know our county attorney will go into more of those meeting procedures when we have that longer joint work session. And as we talked about earlier, we are planning that future work session, and we'll be in touch soon with some dates on when that'll be. And our county attorney will primarily go through Open Records, Open Meetings Act, meeting procedures, conflict of interest, and ethics. And then of course, coming up in 2021, I did mention since 2019, we have been working on our zoning code update. Our consultant is TSW out of Atlanta. So we've had a number of public meetings that a lot of our community and elected and appointed officials have been part of. And that is still ongoing. Right now, the process has been, has been a little bit quiet, because our applicants, or not applicants, our consultants are kind of deep in the weeds of writing those codes right now. So they are heavily involved in drafting those, and so we'll kind of see them reemerge here over the next couple of months. We do anticipate in the spring of 2021, having work sessions with the planning commissions, who are considered the steering committee for this zoning update process, and then have more public meetings throughout the spring and summer. So with that, it's just a few, a few things to get us started in this new year as a refresher and for some new training. And.
Stephanie, let me ask you, since this application's a conditional use permit, would you explain what triggers a conditional use permit?
So for this, for this particular application, which is this way in many zoning, so certain zoning districts will have permitted uses as well as special and conditional uses. And pretty much every zoning district has, has, is outlined that way. And so in this particular situation, the zoning is general commercial, where the Harris Teeter is located. And in the general commercial zoning district, one of the conditional uses allowed is a fuel station. And so, but however, to have a fuel station, you do need to go through this process with the planning commission. And the planning commission is a recommending body. They will make a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners, who will make the final decision on a conditional use permit.
Stephanie, remind me, whenever we nominate someone, do we nominate the vice and the chair at the same time, or is it?
I think we do separately.
Separately, okay.
Will the vice accept?
Okay.
And Mr. Chair, all of the applicant team for Harris Teeter is here, if you want to get started on that.
Yeah, we'll go ahead, if you'll ask him to come in. Let me remind the public that are here tonight that this is not a public here. here nor a public comment period during this time. If you'll please refrain and just be here to be educated like we are and to listen. And the commissioners will be able to ask questions of the applicant during this process. So appreciate that. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for your patience while we set up. Appreciate that a lot. Some great weather to come up here and enjoy. My name is Mark Shelton. I'm with Kimley Horn Associates. With me tonight is Bill Schilling and Blair, another planner with Kimley Horn, and Garrett with Harris Teeter. And we're here for you tonight for a conditional use permit for a, for an accessory fueling station associated with Harris Teeter right at the intersection of Frederica and C L M Parkway. So there we are, right there. So real, so real quick, real quickly, there's our location. Here's our preliminary site plan for all engineers. You can see the layout. The design of this is going to be over an existing building, the existing 6,500 square foot office building is there right now. The proposal is to remove that building and put up a canopy over the seven fuel pump areas. There's a site plan showing the landscaping. This is a bird's eye view. The existing landscaping to the north and around the perimeter is not going to be touched. Interior, internal to the, to the development will have a minimal impact on all the trees. Here's an aerial with the overlay. As you can see, we have the canopy proposed to be right on top of the actual building itself. The building again will be removed. There will be a little kiosk. There's no convenience store associated with this. It's a little kiosk. A lot of gas stations have these little kiosks where there's a man in them at the same hours as the grocery store itself. After hours, it'll be credit card only. And we had a couple of elevations, a couple of illustrations to show what it would look like. As you can see, you can see the kiosk on this one toward the center. And that was a view from C L M Parkway. And this one is from Frederica internal. You can see how the canopy, that was the Harris Teeter logo. And the, the view again from Sea Island Road. And you can see the building on the left. That's the existing Bank of America building. And you can see our canopy to the right. Once again, the building will be removed. There'll be no four walls as you see there today. So with that, quick introduction, I hand it over to our traffic planner, Bill Schilling.
Thank you, Mark. I'm, I'm Bill Schilling with Kimley Horn and Associates and I'm a transportation planner and has been, have been working on this project for Harris Teeter. And I want to share a couple, a couple of the highlights regarding traffic. And one is to start by sharing that essentially this fueling center is, is what we refer to as a customer incentive based fuel center. And so what that means is there is incentive for shoppers at the Harris Teeter grocery store through financial incentive and per gallon discounts to actually shop at this fueling station and refuel at this fueling station as they come and go to, to, to purchase groceries. So Kimley Horn, we actually conducted a study of two stores. They were actually Kroger stores. Harris Teeter being a division of Kroger, but having the very similar co-branded gas station and fueling facility. And, and the two stores we studied were in Myrtle Beach and Merle's Inlet. And what we found from that study is that in the AM peak hour, roughly 30% of the customers that refuel at these fueling stations have purchased groceries as, as part of the same trip and at the same time they've been in the center. So, so they're what we would call a captured trip. They're already in the shopping center. In the PM peak hour, the, the number actually went up. And what, what we observed between those two stores is that in the PM peak hour, approximately 39% of the folks that are fueling in, in the gas station have purchased groceries and gone into the store as part of that trip and are already in the center. So I know there's been concern raised about traffic and increase in traffic. And the reality is when you take that into account, there is, is not that significant increase in traffic that, that you may think. So one of the things that we did, and, and I'll jump to the fourth bullet to kind of provide the, the answer and where we're at is, so when you consider that, when, and the removal of the office, the existing office that's in the shopping center and replace it with this gas station, over the course of the day, the traffic does go up slightly when considering the overall shopping center trip. So, so the estimate is that over the course of an entire day, there are roughly 54 more trips generated by the center. And to put that in perspective, of the entire center, that represents about 1%. So, so it's a fairly small number and that's spread over the course of the day. What we find is in the peak hours, it actually flattens the peak hours out. And in the AM peak hour, we actually see a slight decrease. And in the PM peak hour, we also see a slight decrease because offices are, are heavy peak hour users. A lot of people are coming into the office first thing in the morning and they're leaving in peak hour in the afternoon as they finish work. So, so we have a, have a reduction in the peak hour. Again, a slight increase over daily. What I would, what I would say just from, from more or less a layman's terms is the overall traffic change with this proposed installation of the fueling center really is negligible. And again, we're talking about a little bit of decrease on the, on the peak hour. The reality is the 26 trip reduction in the AM peak hour and the four trip reduction in the PM peak hour. Will that actually be noticeable to folks? Likely not. It's going to feel about the same, pretty much the same as what, what folks are experiencing out there today. Over the course of the day, 55 trips, which when you spread that out, that might equal about one trip every 15 minutes or so, let's call it. Again, that increase is not going to be something that motorists on the adjacent streets are, are going to feel, see. It's really negligible at the end of the day. So one of the, the other key points that I think is important to touch on is the fact this, this sharing of trips and Sea Island Road is a, a really a heavily traveled road, as you all know, as is Frederica. And today, really many of the gas facilities here on the island are on Frederica. And this really provides a fueling opportunity on, on Sea Island Road for folks. And again, many of those folks that are already passing the site and not necessarily new trips and also folks that are already coming to the shopping center. Many of the folks using this fueling center are already in the, in the area and are not going to be what we refer to as new trips. So, so just to highlight that from, from a map standpoint, you know, the other fueling opportunities in this area, the, the closest is to the north, approximately 0.6 miles to the north is the Circle K Shell Station. And then to the south, the nearest is 1.6 miles, which is also another Shell Station. And then there's, there are a couple more stations even, even further to the south and another one further to the north. So, so certainly where this will help is in, in the immediate vicinity of this shopping center over the course of the day, it may add a few more trips. But in the long, in that immediate area, but in the longer term, it's going to take away some of those trips further out on Frederica as some of the business at these other, other Shell Stations are captured in this, this Harris Teeter gas station. So that's a little bit of a summary of, of traffic. I'm going to hand it back over to, to Mark and certainly be available for any questions when, when we're finished here.
So quickly, I know when I was a planner in Jacksonville, it was really important that focused on what you all as a commission will be looking at. What, what are you supposed to be, how are you supposed to be reviewing this application? So I wanted to take a moment and list the criteria that's in your code on conditional use permits. As you see, the first one is, is the use suitable in view of the use in a development of the adjacent and nearby property? We believe it's a suitable. It's a general commercial area. It's consistent. It's appropriately sized with only seven pumps. It complements the area and is an added benefit to those that are getting their groceries at, at Harris Teeter. It's also on the main thoroughfare. The second is, would adversely affect the existing use and/or usability of adjacent or nearby properties? Again, this is a complimentary use. It's consistent to the area. There's actually, as Bill mentioned, a decrease in peak hour trips. It is compatible to the, the, the hotel, the grocery store, the restaurant, all, and the cinema, all within this area. The third one is whether the property to be affected by the zoning decision has a reasonable economic use as currently zoned. Yes, it does, but this is an accessory to that use. So it's incidental, an accessory to the Harris Teeter. It also prevents trips from going further up on Frederica to reach the gas station. Someone that's shopping at Harris Teeter can stay on the site without getting onto Frederica and having another trip a half mile up and a half mile down. And whether the zoning decision will result in a use which will or could cause excessive or burdensome use of existing streets, transportation facilities, utilities or school. Obviously, this is commercial. Schools will not be affected. We avoid impacts to existing vegetation as much as possible. There's no mature trees being taken out. And as we, we spoke about the, the traffic and also it minimizes, we minimize the impacts of the existing trees on the site as well as the perimeter, excuse me. The fifth one is whether the zoning decision is in conformity with the policy and intent of the comprehensive plan. This is always an important one for planners that are looking at this. This is one of the three commercial nodes on the island. And we're right there in the middle of that node. It's a commercial land use in the comprehensive plan. The scale and architectural design is important. The comp plan says it's important. We are making every attempt to make sure this is architecturally and designed suitable to this area. Fewer peak hour trips, as Bill mentioned, which is an important policy of the comprehensive plan. And we believe it meets the intent of the mid-island character area. The sixth question is whether there'll be existing or changing conditions that'll affect the use. There are no known existing or changing conditions right now in the area that would affect this CUP. Finally, number seven is the county commission and planning commission in reviewing the application for a conditional use permit should consider the following. The effect of proposed activity will have on the traffic flow. We spoke about that. We spoke about that. Off-street parking, signs, open space, all meeting the code. We're not asking for any kind of relief there. We meet the code as the code stipulates. Also, we're going to adhere to section 624, which is the St. Simon's Island Tree Canopy Preservation, which we will be meeting. Finally, the hours and manner of operation. As I mentioned before, this will be active during grocery store hours. After grocery store hours, this will be available for credit card only. Outdoor lighting, we will meet the code. Ingress and egress, nothing's changing how you come in and leave the property. And finally, the compatibility with surrounding land uses. As we've mentioned, there is grocery store, of course, retail, restaurant, offices. There's a cinema, a hotel, and drive-throughs in the vicinity. So we believe that this is compatible with the surrounding area. Yes, sir. Yes, sir, absolutely.
So hours of operation, the grocery store, six AM to eleven. Is eleven PM the current operating hours for Harris Teeter?
We've been changing the operation. It may have been twenty-four hour at one point, but it's likely six AM to midnight.
You got that?
No.
And what, sorry. So it's going to be available twenty-four hours?
For credit card, right. There's no convenience store associated with this, so it's only for credit card.
So for outdoor lighting, you mentioned it, we meet the land development code. Actually, we don't have a lot of lighting requirements. So I don't know if it's for the high or for the next two guys. You might want to be able to strive with the lighting approach a bit.
Good suggestion.
Certainly a balance of both, though. There's a, like, looking at lighting, you need to make sure that it's safe. And, but same time, obviously, make sure that the lighting is kind of convenient or convenient for the set of properties. And looking at all, which is extremely easy to do with LED lighting these days. So we do something for the...
Yeah, that's a good suggestion.
LED lighting these days, frankly, are very rare. And not a lot of standards for LED bill candles at the working surface level. Because, you know, they're just so new, having expensive time of lighting design. But, so I think there's going to be a lot of concern about environmental effect of lighting. Do you have some photos of the current fuel stations and how they've achieved that? You know, this is a very sensitive location. I just can't overemphasize that.
Sure. We could do a photometric design to show you where the foot candles, how they go to zero at the property line. How it goes out. If you've seen us photometric designs before, we can provide one of those.
And let's see if something else. Now, the kiosk, what do you, this is a man kiosk. What's the size of the kiosk?
It's two hundred and forty square feet.
So is it ten by ten building or...?
I think it's about ten by twenty.
Ten by twenty-one.
And is that a, is that all for staffing facilities to customers or...?
There's a public restroom on the back end of it, and then there's a, inside the kiosk is a heated pool facility for an employee to be on-site, monitored, kept in check, monitored.
So will you offer other convenience products to sell?
There'll be some minor convenience products, though. Sweet and salty snacks, backup products.
So you're going to have curbside promotions for what's to sell inside?
I'm not sure what you mean by curbside promotion.
Advertising? Are you going to have, you know, some of these... I don't want to call this a gas station. I recommend I do. Oh, I'm sorry.
Here you go. So I was saying, I realize you're not positioning a full-service convenience gas station, but you are going to have, for lack of a better term, a hybrid setup. You will be offering some convenient snacks and drinks. So my point was, will you be having some of that on the curb side, outside of the building?
So inside the building, there's just your architacko products and a lot of...
Yeah, I'm asking about the outside. Thank you.
And then in front of that building, there's two cabinets that'll have your chips or whatever it might be. It's like automotive stuff, like a quart of oil if you need to...
Okay.
And then two coolers where you'll be able to have a cold beverage. Occasionally, we'll put out a pallet of, say, firewood or, you know, something that would be seasonal, a twenty-four pack of water. That would be something you'd rather than going, but other than that, there's, you know, I'm telling you myself.
Okay, just sorry to drill down on this. I think people need to know exactly the nature of the quote-unquote kiosk. And I think we need to get a little more specificity about the operating hours. You know, if they're going to match the grocery store, what are those? You don't seem to know those tonight. And you've already confirmed it'll be open twenty-four hours. So these lights will be on twenty-four hours? Of the awning lights? Okay.
For safety purposes. I would imagine that the lighting in the shopping center is on twenty-four hours as well.
I won't comment on that.
And just to reiterate, I appreciate the planning department setting up this forum as a public workshop. It was our intent to first reach out to the community and to the commissioners to, you know, get this exact input that you're giving us right now.
Right.
So this is exactly the forum we were hoping for to take back and to, you know, revise as needed. So I really appreciate your input.
Yeah, look, we're just trying to learn as much tonight so that we're better prepared during the public forum, and you're better prepared.
Right.
You know, we're going to tend to get into the site plan design, even though this is really a permit you're seeking at this milestone. But I think we always kind of jump forward to what that physical design is going to be as we're considering a conditional use permit or a special use permit, as we have in the past. So please, you know, indulge me while I have these questions. You mentioned, if I may, while we're up here, and I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, if I'm taking up too much time, let me know. You have a island, you call it a landscape island. First off, can you go back to that overlay site view? I thought that's an excellent diagram to show because there's a lot of concern, well, what's coming out and what's going in. It looks like the canopy footprint is smaller than the existing building. That's a great thing. That landscape island's a little bit concerning. What's the point of that unless you're just curbing existing landscape? It looks like there are some trees or tree shrubs currently. I think folks would like to see all of that remain. I know as a retailer, you want to improve your street visibility. I think folks here want to decrease that for obvious reasons. And so that, along with lighting, is, I think is going to be the largest concern that you'll hear about. So my question about the landscape, you don't have to answer tonight unless you have an answer.
The, so actually, the purpose of the landscape island there is to preserve those trees.
Right.
We did a tree survey. We did, actually, there's one image that shows the identified specimens on site. That island there is a hundred percent to preserve the existing vegetation that's on site.
Good.
And I will note that when we overlay a site plan like this on aerial, sometimes it doesn't line up exactly because you're trying to mathematically scale something to an aerial.
Yeah.
So if it's off by a little bit, you know, just a minute. The intent there is to leave existing curbside.
Okay.
Right.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, the perimeter landscaping untouched and preserve as many trees as possible in that landscape island where the majority of them are right now.
Yeah, and I know when you get to the site plan, you'll have to prove what's coming out and what's, you know, staying or adding.
Yes, sir.
And I appreciate that. Again, relative to lighting and putting aside the safety and operations issue, I don't think people would appreciate lighting for the sake of improving visibility by passing motorists. As you said, many of your customers will be grocery shoppers, not meant to be a destination fueling station. So I think maybe that's something to consider and talk about, you know, at some point. You know, the two other locations you mentioned where you have, you did your studies. I don't know what the surrounding environment is. We kind of like our trees here, and it's kind of like the third rail. You go to touch one of these trees, you're opening yourself up for some real challenges. So you got to figure out how do you, how can you invest in this? And I appreciate, you know, the property and your ideas in doing that and yet maintain the integrity of the landscape.
How accurate are the renderings as far as the trees go?
What, the tree survey?
Yeah, I mean, there's, I mean, it looks like they're, the renderings are fairly specific in way of trees. I'm just wondering if that is an artist rendering or if you've actually gone to the trouble of actually locating the trees in the rendering.
Yeah, this here is actually based off of a tree survey. So we were actually, we had a surveyor go out and identify the exact location and down under and species each one of those trees. And then in that case, we can go through and overlay that.
Right, I understand that, but I'm saying the renderings, the 3D renderings that you have, the pictures. Okay, well, that's what I was asking. I mean, it's there, it's more of just an artist depiction. Right, well, we'll understand, but, yeah, okay.
Okay, according to your diagram up top there where you say tree exhibit, okay, and the red, you have tree to be removed. And I'm looking at one, two, three, four, I'm looking at the red circles. So I'm looking at at least one, two, three, four, five, six. And it looked like seven or eight. How many, okay, because at one point you say you would not disturb any of the trees, but I'm looking at several trees that will be removed.
It was our intent to, in other words, we're not trying to take any out that we don't have to to situate this site. The ones being removed are palms. They're palm trees that were there when this site was developed. And those right now, at those locations, I think there's eleven, might be a little bit more, taken out. Majority of those, if not all of them, all but two of them are palm trees.
So because they're palm trees, they're insignificant or...?
They're not insignificant, but they're along the same area where we're putting the canopy. So by putting a canopy on top of that building, they interfere with the maneuverability into the fueling station, the fueling pumps.
Okay, I have a couple other questions. You stated that there is a need at that location, and I've heard you say it repeatedly. Okay, tell me why. I know you said people can get gas and go to the grocery store at the same time. So it'd be primary for the shoppers there at the grocery store?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, so we go through when we do an exhaustive market analysis, whenever we look at installing fuel dispensers at any local facility. And looking at this market here, the offering is pretty sparse. The players in the market really, to put this politely, are not up to standards of what today you would expect in terms of the equipment on site, customers' ability to navigate the site, get in and out. And what we're offering here is a state-of-the-art facility that would offer back to these customers, you know, the community and customer Harris Teeter. Introducing another competitor in the market also benefits the customer by essentially stabilizing prices in the market. So when we would come in here, we would expect that gas prices across the market would generally go down because there's more competition introduced in the market. On coastal areas, it's also pretty beneficial when you run into emergency situations such as hurricanes, which we've seen across board when supply becomes an issue and you have to run on a product like gas. So when you have more suppliers, more operators are getting fuel with all their different avenues to the island, it really does benefit as well. And that all goes into our market analysis.
If I may ask...
Hold on, hold on a minute. Matt, were you through with your presentation? We kind of jumped in with questions, but I'd like you to complete that.
Yes, sir. Next slide actually said questions.
Okay, good.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Relative to market studies, I don't know if you can share confidentiality, if you've studied the potential demand, how often would you need a refueling tanker to come based on your projections?
It all really just depends. I hate to answer a question with it depends, but it really does. The fuel tanks that we have in the ground, there's twenty-eight thousand gallon and eighteen thousand, I think, are proposed here. And it all just depends on levels within the tanks. There's guys that sit behind desks that are much smarter than myself that are doing petroleum purchasing.
Yeah, what is the range?
It could be daily, you know, a couple times a week.
Yeah, it's not daily, I'm sure of that. We don't have a station on this island that's getting daily deliveries.
It could be in peak times when you have an issue of a hurricane impending, there's certain times when it would be.
Relative to that, there was some, I think there was a reference to a large truck fueling station. Is that accurate or is there a diesel? Is that for...?
So I'm projecting a question here. I think probably what I was referring to is when we leave these out, there's a truck route that's over and bows on it, and that is specifically for carrier. So it's a tanker truck that has to be able to safely now into the site, especially if there's customers present while it's on there.
Right.
So that could have been where that was coming from.
Yeah.
But diesel will also be offered here. So you will be able to pull up and, you know, your pickup truck is diesel or anything like that. Or, I mean, I'm not saying that a dump truck couldn't show up there. But really, when you run into something like that, like a truck dispensing facility, they're going to somewhere with a high-flow pump when you're looking at a couple hundred gallons.
Yeah, well, you have any high-flow pumps?
It's a slower dispensing mechanism. And so really, that's what would, I mean, you could incentivize somebody to come down there, but financially, I mean, they would be sitting in a pump forever.
What's the height of the canopy relative to the existing building?
I'm not sure what the existing building is. I think the bottom of the canopy is sixteen feet and the top is...
Sounds about right.
You know, part of what you, as you've done the overlay, maybe you can show an elevation overlay of, you know, your canopy relative to the existing brick and mortar. You know, a lot of people, when they consider something changed, they want to know, well, what's the delta? And I think, you know, visually, that could help.
Current building's thirty, just under thirty-one feet.
Current building's just under thirty-one feet.
So sixteen feet, you said?
On the bottom side of the canopy and then there's a deepness.
Canopy is four to five feet. Yeah.
I've, I've got a question about parking. From what I can gather from the site plan, it looks like 42 spaces are gonna be eliminated. Is that correct?
I believe so.
Okay. And I think based off of the square footage of the Signature Building, they require 31. Is that correct? And then you all are adding back 14?
What we did is we made sure we met the code requirement, so if any that we removed, if it went below the code, we had to bring them back. So it's our intent just to meet the code when it comes to parking. Some, some areas don't want a proliferation of parking, others want plenty of parking just in case. We stuck to the code because it's a default preference.
Okay, 'cause I, because it seems to me like there will be a deficit of spaces, and, you know, during, at Harris Teeter, you know, definitely at high-traffic times, but more often than not, those two, the, the parking area, which would be the, where the fuel tanks are going, the area in gray...
Trying to get the overall shopping center?
Yeah, the, the ones to the left.
Okay.
On the Harris Teeter side of the building. That, that ring right there, I think is, you know, that's primarily used by grocery shoppers. I know, I found myself parking there quite a bit during hot time, and, you know, even on the, the backside of Signature.
So you, I'm sorry, you, you would like to see a parking analysis to show how you're going?
I would, I would, 'cause, I mean, it's, parking in that, that shopping center is definitely an issue.
Sure.
You know, and with the increase, you know, in our community of the population, whereas it, you know, used to be seasonal as to, you know, how full that parking lot is, it's pretty much full, you know, most of the day from, you know, 11 o'clock, 11 o'clock on, and especially holidays, so, and, and parking really has always been an issue even, you know, for when other restaurants were there and things like that. So I guess with the removal of the 42 spaces and then technically 14 coming back for the pumps, how is that taken into consideration, you know, with the, with the whole development?
And the, the good thing here is that the users of this fueling area are not gonna be parking in parking spaces.
Right, I got, I get that.
And so that does help, the, the generation of parking is reduced from an office building, 'cause that's what's there right now. But it's a, a great topic, I know we're gonna meet the code, but I think we can show a parking generation table to kind, to show you, you know, how many are going away and how many are coming back.
Yeah, 'cause you referred to it as the, the shared center, and, you know, while the real estate agents might not fill up all of their, you know, 31 spaces, they're definitely occupied by other shared businesses within the development.
Makes sense, yes, ma'am.
Also, you stated that this fueling station will complement the area. How?
Well, one of the biggest things about complimenting an area is a shared use, so when you go to this destination, whether it be for grocery store, the cinema, or a restaurant, that you can stay within this quadrant to get your gas, drive by the bank, do some other errands without having to get back onto the road. Getting back onto the road adds another person in the queue for a stoplight. Getting back on the road is a left turn somewhere that's gonna cause it backed up in traffic. So this is a accessory benefit to the shoppers here that don't have to get back on Frederica and go a mile and a half south or a half mile north to get gas.
There'll be a have to if they're going home.
Maybe what? Oh, that, yeah.
If they go home.
Yeah, 80% of our residents live off of that road, in that area, so...
Stephanie, do you know how many parking spots are required for the entire shopping center? And are we biting into that with this?
We do not have the number for the entire center. I do know a fuel station requires two spaces per pump, so that's what they took into account here, but I don't know if we have the number.
Just when there's a lot of stores and a big, big grocery store. Think we can have that by our next meeting?
Yes.
Great.
A question about the petrol tanker. Is there any regulation of hours of delivery that you have as a, as a store?
As a store, we do not. We do abide by whatever local regulations would be in place. So, I mean, we wouldn't go over and limit ourselves if, if it wasn't something required by the authorities.
Right. Have you imagined the path of that tanker coming and going out of that parking lot?
That's what I was asking for when you asked the diesel question, that's what we do, we overlay that truck route to make sure that he's not running over curbs or anything like that, he can either safely navigate.
Okay, so this tanker presumably will come from the mainland, it gets in there. How does he get back to the mainland? Can, can you describe that?
I don't have the truck route in front of me right now, but I believe what he does is he comes in, he drops fuel on the left-hand side, so I believe he comes in this entrance here, comes down, circulates the facility here, stages, actually, he comes in this way, stages, drops left, and then comes back out, and he can either go that way and/or he can come back down, and there's the light down there for the other shop to go as well and get back out of the way.
There's, there's not a light down there.
There's not a light?
There's not a light in that one.
Well, the light up here, the, the access on, the access.
Okay, so let's just play through what you just described. I think maybe you wanna go back to your office and work through this, but based on what you just described, if he comes south and tries to turn left on Frederica to get to that light, that's not gonna be easy, if, if near impossible for an 18-wheeler, okay? So, what's the other way he might try and get back on the Sea Island Road?
There's multiple ways that the engineers would have run through, he has multiple options. They go through, we, our operations folks have a preferable route that they'll, they'll do, but...
Okay, I don't wanna embarrass you, but it's obvious that you don't know and you've not walked through this, it's very simple.
I can assure you...
Okay. You're gonna have to show how it's done, okay? And I encourage you to go back and speak to that engineer, let him show you how that truck's gonna come in and leave.
We'll have it happen.
Okay. That's, if he's really studied that, he's not shared that nightmare with you, okay?
Great input.
I have a question about the, the traffic study. So was that done internally and, and just based off of usage of the, the Hilton Head location and the other location? Was, has there been a, a recent traffic study done, you know, by an independent or, or by your firm, of the actual traffic patterns of that intersection and who's going in what direction and how many cars are coming through?
Of, of the specific intersection here at Sea Island and Frederica?
Yes, in the, in, in the adjacent intersection.
We, we have not.
You have not?
Recognizing that realistically, you know, with the daily, with, you know, roughly being about the same, once we got to the point we made that determination, we do not do it for this as far as, you know, studying, studying the surrounding.
Okay. Is that, the intersection is, is a, is a nightmare at most times of the day, so it would, you know, as it would be affecting the people coming and going and, and living on the island, and I would think it would be important to, to study what's actually happening to that space.
If you guys were to get approval from us and then subsequently the county commissioners, what's your timeline for construction?
We'd have to lay it out. After, I mean, obviously, there could be changes that are done to this plan through the process. After that, we would have to get a, generate a construction drawings, permitting, I'm not quite sure off the top of my head how long that takes to be finished.
About three years.
Yeah, quite some time. And then after that, then it's about 120-day build period, and then 30 days for the [inaudible].
Oh, all right. Are you gonna purchase this property or lease, lease?
You know, because I am very curious as to how you're going to get in and out. About the traffic coordinator stated that you would use the entrance and everything that's already there, and I've been trying to visualize how in the world, you know, that will work.
For the truck? For the truck or general traffic?
Truck, yeah, for the truck. General traffic, it's no problem, 'cause they're in and out now, so...
We'll get that truck route. We can show that, there's engineers, of course, use CAD, and there's auto turn on it, we can get a, the size of the tanker and actually kinda show its movement, so we can actually show that.
Yeah, I don't think navigating the, the parking lot is the issue. I think getting in and out of that parking lot is gonna be your challenge.
Let me step in here, I've got a prior engagement, so I'll be stepping out, but I just wanna tell you the process next week.
Yes, sir.
I believe y'all are on the third on the agenda. And each one of our items are, are public comment periods. We'll have 30 minutes for each side, for the two items before you, we get to you. This application is, it's a public hearing. Same rules apply, there'll be 30 minutes for each side, the opposing side and those who are for it. And, but you will first, when, when we start that, the staff will make a presentation, then we'll ask you to come up and make a presentation. And commissioners will ask questions and that sort of thing, and then we'll open it up for the public hearing. And once that's closed, then if there's any other questions or any rebuttal that you might have for any, any comments, and then we'll have a motion and a second and a vote, and it's gonna take four votes for whichever way this goes. And whatever we do, it will go to the county commission. I think the last meeting of this month, which will be two weeks from today, or, yeah? Be February, first meeting in February probably, most likely, for that, 'cause they have, they make the final decision on conditional use permits, so I just wanted you to know that. And we'll be, be in a, a larger room because we expect a large crowd to come as much as can be safely assembled, and anyway, so...
Yes, sir, appreciate that.
I appreciate you coming today, and if there's any other questions, I think commissioners can follow.
Thank you all very much. Great input.
Thank you.
Left anybody else with other questions? You gonna close this out?
Are we done?
We're done.
All right. What's your say?